That's uh. Good evening, everyone. This is a uh. Meeting of the Suits Berry Planning Board. I'll call the meeting to order. Note the meeting is being recorded. I will know we have Michael De Kiara, Keith Hasty, Deacon Bonner, Ashley Pycroft and. Steve Bressler and myself, Nathan Murphy present. And we are missing uh Jeff Weston. And I think he said he was gonna be. Traveling or in Boston or something with his daughter, so uh we're not really expecting him. We have Tom Seaford, Associate Member. So I'll go ahead and uh designate you to participate since we're missing one. And uh. Here we go. We have a short meeting. Thank you, uh, Michael for posting some of the uh. The bare bones that you did, I, you know, I uh. I did it. I totally. Uh missed the whole. Meeting posting deadline on Thursday, so we have a probably a short meeting today. Probably good, probably for the best, since we just had a big run up to town meeting. Okay, so I'll open the uh. For to public comment. Would anyone like to make a public comment? Hearing and seeing none.
No, I got something. It's quick. Um, I'm just wondering about getting. An actual photocopy of the bylaws, like if that's something we can still get from Grace. I know.
I'll just ask Mateo to, or ask our land use clerk to uh print that up for you.
Okay, that'd be awesome. I like to have it on paper.
Yeah. Yeah, you can, you can ask him to print up a copy. Maybe wait until the uh, you know, we get the okay from the Attorney General, you get that uh. The recent amendments in there and you'll have the uh whole. Rated Development Section uh. Omitted.
Okay.
Um. I, I tried for years to, to get it, to get it in, in printed form.
Uh huh.
And, and, and I think, and it never, never happened when I asked Grace.
Um, I, I have one.
Yeah, but it might, but it's never current.
Right.
Um, so I think, I think having Mateo get on it and probably, and probably working with Grace would be really good. Because whatever's being handed out to the public isn't, isn't up to date either.
Right.
It should be now.
Yeah, the, the um, so I'll just welcome Jeff and uh, so we'll have uh Tom uh Seaford back as an associate member. Uh Jeff, welcome. Good to see you. I didn't think you were gonna make it us, you know, I, I thought I had heard uh. That he might be in Boston. Are you in Boston?
I'm actually, I'm not in Boston and I'm not in Tuscany. I'm in Shutsberry. I don't know if you've ever heard of it before.
Rings a bell.
No birthday party?
It's delayed till tomorrow.
Uh, that's good, that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, uh, actually, I would definitely, I. I would imagine if you asked uh Orlando's clerk to do it, that it will just. Um, should be pretty easy, you know, maybe if there's objections, I'll let you know.
Okay, do you want me to send him an email or you said you're gonna?
Oh, yeah, I would suggest that you do it.
Okay, cool, yeah.
And, and I can. I'll send him an email too and, and just kind of note, hey, you know, uh. You know, if people ask for paper copies, you know, no problem with that. We should be able to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll let you know if uh, if I get a response to that too, I guess, but anyway. All right, um. Let's see. Anyone else for a public comment item?
Yeah, I would like the public to know what Deacon is eating for dinner.
And this is my ice cream.
That's good. You know, ice cream sounds pretty good right now. Did you, did you bring enough for everybody?
Yeah, you'll have to come over.
What, what flavor, Deacon?
It's uh, chocolate, chocolate chip.
Okay.
Nice.
Nice.
Sorry, proud of you.
Oh, that's uh, that's good, that's good. Uh, gives us a little uh inspiration to now line our snacks up next time. Uh, next I have a. Landowner uh Guidance and Education. Is there anyone who wants to? Actually, I don't have that on the agenda anyway, so. So we'll, well, we'll pretend I didn't say that, okay. Annual Town Meeting Recap. Uh, long story short, all our amendments passed. Um, without uh, without much fuss. There's a few questions on ADUs, um. You know, there was some, some folks at the Lake area who were kind of wondering about, well, you know, I don't have very much space. How's that gonna work, so on and so forth, and I said. I gotta just explain, you know, there's some unanswered questions. Uh, that's why we put it up to Site Plan Review. So that, you know, the zoning board can take a peek at that and. Uh, you know, figure it all out for us, so. Uh, it was pretty, you know, things were kept somewhat uh simplified. Uh, you know, Michael uh spoke to it as well. Um, and Donna also chimed in with some uh key element. I forgot to, we both forgot to mention, I guess, that uh. You know, when you do it, you'll also have to pass Title V. Um, which is an important step, kind of brings into perspective. Um. You know, there was a big Lake Wayola um bylaw that eventually passed and I, when I left. There was one amendment uh from Tom that had been uh voted down, but. I understand there was another amendment that was put forth to the uh, to the article. And then a modification was made saying they have to stay at a six mile per hour speed limit if you're within a hundred fifty feet from. Small craft or, or uh, or the shore, the shore of small craft or swimmers, right? So, something like that.
Yeah, that's right.
So. Tom.
You left before the final vote? On that one, or you had to leave before the final vote? That's too bad. Um, yeah.
I had a, a prior engagement that, that afternoon and uh. I was happy that I was able to stay through all the planning board related amendments and uh, regrettably, I uh. I missed quite a few hours of it, I, I hear.
Oh, I uh, I don't know if you truly regret it, but I was only joshing with you. It was such a long meeting, wasn't it?
Was. It was.
But a, but a big slap on the back to, to Michael and to you, Nathan, for good explanations. Of the different, of the articles, of the warrants. So I thought you guys did a real good job without. And especially, Michael, you did a good dance with the uh. With the legal issues regarding the solar.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, I mean, I. That worked out really well, I gotta say, you know, so. In advance of the meeting, Rita and Donna and AJ and I had a conversation. To figure out what Donna would, what Donna said we could say. Cause I talked to AJ and I was like, I have no idea, you know, and I think it ended up. Being a good airing of information that we're allowed to share. Um, it seemed like people came away appreciative, so I got kudos to the FinCom for raising it. Um, I mean, but I appreciate the comments, Steve. Thank you.
Well, job well done.
Yeah, that was a. Yeah, it's a tough issue for the town, right? You know, it's been a good amount of money.
Don't say too much, Nathan.
I'm not saying anything, I'm not saying anything, you know, I, I uh. I went up as, you know, as a citizen and just. I was like, you know, I'm not sure now is the time to walk away from the table. But that's uh, that's town meeting, town meeting approved that measure to allocate funds as needed, so we'll see what happens. I don't know what's uh, what the details are right now, but. Anyway.
I wonder who could talk.
I appreciated the comment by at least two people other than Michael, you know, pe- from the public, I don't know who they were. Basically, saying if we were not, if we kowtow to a multinational corporation. And bend over with our bylaws, what do we have them for? That, I'm paraphrasing the sentiment, but I appreciated that, those comments that were along those lines.
Right. Also, I'm just gonna note that I did uh, I thought that um. Nettie uh did a great job uh with her first run through as a moderator. I was impressed. That's a, it's a difficult post.
Hell of a way to start.
Yeah.
Real, an eight hour meeting.
Yeah. That was actually one of the longest ones that I've been at, you know, it's. And the lake was the thing that really. Probably took the largest chunk of time. The lake issue, yeah.
That would always.
I'm always amazed. You can never predict what's gonna happen. Like, there will always be one issue that takes an hour. That was it.
Yep.
All right, anyone else have any other uh comments or uh questions about uh what happened or didn't happen at town meeting? No, okay, hearing and seeing that, we'll move on. All right, we'll talk about the CPA appointment briefly. Um, I forgot that uh, until somewhat recently that Mateo would not be here. You know, I was somewhat aspirationally hoping that he might uh. Since he chairs the CPC. However, you know, I have confirmed with uh Cliff Reed, who is our current um designee to the committee, that he's willing to do it again. Um, might be worth noting, I, I think somehow he's been there two years already and I think we only. Recommended it once, but that's neither here nor there.
Minor details, Nathan, minor detail.
No, it's a minor detail, that's right. You know, he's been there, he's been doing it, um, so. Uh, I sent them an email that. Cause I reached out to him some time ago, I think, you know, just to, I'm not gonna read the email out loud or anything, but. Uh, he was just summarizing, I think, you know, the one year was somewhat slow and then, you know, coming into this year, you know, this was a few months back, there's been a lot of activity. Um. He mentioned something about uh, there, there was one grant that was received uh last year and ended up at the special town meeting we had, I think in December. That was funded for the regional high school track and field, and I, I think that passed. So that was somewhat news to me, but uh, so that happened and obviously we had a bunch of amendments that just uh made it to town meeting this year. I think all those passed uh with a clear majority there, so. Um, you know, he's been busy on the committee, um. You know, the, the planning board has not uh actively engaged in the CPC business with our designee, but um. You know, if anyone follows what's going on in that committee and, and wants to be more involved, you know, you're welcome to uh, to look at it and bring things uh to us. You know, if anyone ever has anything, you know, just let me know, we'll, we'll get it on the agenda, we can talk about it and inform our designee as needed. Um, other than that, that's uh, that's all I have for that. I'll uh. Does anyone else have any uh comments or questions?
I was just gonna say, if we have another light meeting with not a, a big agenda, we might wanna just invite Cliff so we can talk to him in real life, just.
Yeah, no.
Exchange ideas.
Yeah, we could do that. Um.
You want a motion to approve, to nominate?
I was gonna ask for that next, yeah, if no one has anything, but um, with that uh. Yeah, I mean, I guess we could ask him, you know, just as he comes on uh, sometime, just. Maybe give us a little bit of a summary of what's going on and then if anyone has anything, um. You know, they'd like him to address, they can email to him separately from the, or, you know, they could just put the questions out there and then we could discuss in the meeting, something like that. Um, so we can do that. I'll uh. I'll kind of keep an eye on what's, what's going on. I mean, you know, right now we don't have anything that I know of that uh is, is gonna come our way. Obviously, you never know when stuff is gonna happen, but. I mean, I think for the most part, we might expect some uh A and Rs or something like that, but I haven't caught one of any. Kind of special permit applications. Usually there's little whispers about that, cause obviously there's a lot to go into it, so. Um, so yeah, I'll uh, I'll hear a motion to uh designate uh Cliff Reed as the planning board rep on the uh Community Preservation Committee.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Steve. Steve moves to air a second.
A second.
All right.
Let Deacon get it.
Did Deacon second?
I, I tried to.
All right, we'll, we'll give Deacon credit, so, so, you know, uh, Steve moves, Deacon seconds uh to. First to recommend, uh, any other, any discussion on this? All right, hearing and seeing none, I'll call a roll. Um, uh, Bonner?
Hi.
Weston?
Hi.
Pycroft?
Hi.
Bressler?
Hi.
Easty?
Hi.
De Kiara?
Hi.
Yeah, I'm an I, the motion carries unanimously. Excellent.
I, I got two quick things, Nathan. Do you have to officially demote Tom? Or does it just get bounced automatically?
What's that?
You, you had Tom be a full member before Jeff came. Do you have to un?
I di- I did, I did. When Jeff came on, I, I uh, I said yes, go back, yeah.
The, the other thing was, I don't know if it was you and I, I had some conversation about. Appointment for their Franklin County Planning Board. Was that you and me?
So that was, you know. I didn't get it on the agenda in time, uh, obviously, you know, I totally missed the whole thing, um. Yeah, and I, I was wondering, because, you know, I remember Becky had reached out to me once, you know, some time ago, and now recently the uh Ministry of Secretary has reached out, but. Um, you know, when I was looking at FERCOG, kind of like. A while back, when I was first trying to learn about it, I saw, I thought I saw that the. The planning board, the regional planning board would uh have. A designee of the planning board and the uh Chair of the Select Board, where the uh. Uh.
There's two, there's two bodies. So there's the FERCOG Board and Ellen McKay has been the longtime representative for the town. I think she's probably the designee of the Select Board. And then there's the Franklin County Planning Board, which I think they're gonna reconstitute in some version, cause I don't, they, they don't get very, get very good attendance, so I think they're gonna. Change it, but traditionally. Each town who's a member of FERCOG sends a planning board member who may or may not show up. Um, so like Jeff did it for a while, I think I did it. Actually, I did it maybe on Select Board, I can't remember.
Right, no, I, I, I went to a few meetings and I, I've uh, I have not had good attendance. Um, so, yeah, no, I mean, I know there's, there's the two bodies, um. You know, Franklin County Regional Council of Governments. And Franklin County, you know, kind of regional planning board, right? And I, I thought that the planning board had also the Chair of the Select Board as a designee. But anyway, I, I, my, you know, the question I was getting at was uh. Is this, is the planning board's designated a FERCOG, you know, planning board, a select board appointment, or do we just do it?
It's a select board appointment. Everyone get. We just recommend it and they appoint them, just like everything else.
Well, I mean, you know, like, everything else is a, a board that was either created by the Select Board or, or by a town bylaw or um. Possibly, you know, like in the Concom is established through, through state law, right? You know, but it's, they're all town boards. Uh, with this, you know, so is there anything that actually says the Select Board does it? Is it, is it?
I think every, every position that's representing the town that's not elected is, gets appointed by the Select Board as the executive body. So it doesn't matter who creates the other body, it's just that if the town is sending somebody representing us, then the Select Board does the appointment. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, that, that kind of makes sense. Um, I mean, you know, I'm not really perturbed about it. Um. I just uh, I was under the impression that the planning board had the authority to send its own designee. As that's how the uh. I don't know, you know, that was my interpretation of it when I looked at it. So I was kind of trying to figure out, you know, is there some sort of, I mean, I don't think we have a bylaw that states that.
I think the practicality is no one's paying attention and it's always low stakes that any of us could go.
Yeah. You know, I'm like splitting hairs here, but I, you know, I, I, I was trying to just uh. See if there was anything, you know, in writing about it. I mean, maybe it is.
I went to two in the last six months, just cause I was interested and I got on the email list, um, but I was, I haven't been appointed officially. So.
Um. Yeah, so I would, I would be remiss to make any kind of recommendation of Select Word now as we have not properly posted it. Uh, so I think, you know, next time we meet, we can do that if there's a. A meeting between now and then and the time the Select Board does an appointment and uh, you know, you're there, Michael, then, you know, good on you, but uh. Um, I don't know, uh.
Not going anywhere.
Yeah, if, if anyone is interested in, in uh going up to FERCOG and uh. And representing us on that regional planning board. Um, that's, that's on the table. Um, so we'll, we'll talk about it more. Next time we meet. I also, I decided to set up a recurring meeting in the uh Mytown Government, right? So. The way that works is uh, it just is designated um. At least for the next year, uh, to be on the second Monday of every month. Skips holidays, so there's nothing currently in, I think, November, so we'll often post that one. De facto, or, you know, uh, ad hoc. Um. And I'll get an email ten days prior reminding me to, you know, post the agenda. I also set some uh monthly reminders on uh. Wednesdays to get on it if I haven't already, so. And I, and I also, uh, you know. I'm into the idea of getting the agenda up sooner rather than later anyway, which obviously I have not really. Practiced very much, but that's uh, this is a good impetus to kind of get that uh going. So my apologies to the board for um slipping up this uh, this month. On the agenda.
Um, Nathan, I'm amazed by all you do. I mean, you have a lot going on, so it's all good.
Well, I appreciate that, Ashley. Um. Anyway, uh, we'll move on. I think uh, we're just gonna, um, we have minutes on the agenda. Now, we don't have a specific uh. Date, but I propose that if uh unless uh people object or feel, you know, they're unprepared anyway, because there wasn't any specifics given. I would, I would not mind uh, you know, reviewing and approving the minutes from uh last month. I think that's a reasonable thing to do. Um, I reviewed them.
Nathan, I don't think it's legal. I don't think it's legal to vote on the minutes.
Um, because of the public here, uh, because of the non notification?
Yeah.
Well, we have minutes on the agenda. I guess because it doesn't set, uh, set a specific date.
Yeah, no, no, Donna got after me for this once. I've made this mistake too.
No, I mean, I understand that uh, you know, so it's. I, I looked at the open meeting law a little bit, you know, it says, you know, it's uh. You know, agenda items are supposed to be uh specific. Um, you know, if you're, you know, doing something on uh. You know, it's supposed to get, you know, give an idea of uh what's there, um. You know, if I was the town council, I would certainly uh do that. I mean, I haven't gone so far as to look up specific complaints that uh may uh, may have been filed against boards for not uh. Having the specific dates in there. Um, you know, if, if we don't wanna do it, we don't have to do it. Um, I, 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 I think we could do it with uh, you know, I mean, if somebody filed a complaint, we could say, all right, look, you know what? Uh, we thought we might be able to do it since it was just the prior me- meeting and minutes were on there, but if uh. Uh, you know, I'm not sure if anyone, you know, I mean, what have you, but if, if uh people aren't comfortable, we don't have to do it. So I see uh Tom's hands up, Michael's hand is up, so we'll start with Tom.
Um, I don't have a vote on this, but I would be uncomfortable.
Okay.
Um, just from histories I've seen with our own Select Board and specific topic of whether the dates of the meeting minutes around the agenda or not, it was controversial. At the week. So I don't know if a decision was made, but it's definitely been raised as a controversy before.
At the Select?
Yeah.
Was it a, was it a complaint?
I don't know if it was an inquiry or a complaint. I don't know to what degree it went, but there was a phase when they were being very clear about putting the dates of the minutes they would be reviewing. And that was probably a phase about, I'm guessing, but it seemed to be like July, August last year. Um. I'm not, I'm just offering that as my observation. I'm happy if you do it either way tonight, but I know it has been an issue.
Okay. Michael?
Yeah, I would, I did not read those, so it'd be, I'd rather read them. I had, ended up reading. The March two thousand twenty four, since that was something that Mateo sent out, but um, I think, given the conversation. Although this is a really short meeting and it'd be a really great time to do it, um, it seems maybe advisable not to. But definitely the May one, I'd rather not do.
Yeah, so let's uh. Let's do this, um. We won't vote to approve them, but we will review them. Because uh, I've uh. I've put up.
The May one?
Yeah, the May one. So we'll, we'll review it, we'll talk about it, uh, but we won't vote on it. And that way, it can just, you know, just because, um, when, you know, I just looked at them uh today and I found several items that I wanted to change and uh basically if uh. You know, we'll do just a uh, you know. If any, you know, kind of like uh, make sure everyone agrees, uh, you know, if anyone sees anything additional. Um, we can note it and then um, so I'll kind of hang on to this and then uh. You know, when I, when everyone goes through and uh. I'll send it out to the board, you know, after we go through a review tonight. If anyone, you know, when you get a chance to actually read through it, see something additional, then you'll send that back to me, since I have a document that's already had edits on top of it. And uh. And then at the next meeting, uh, you know, I'll have incorporated any subsequent changes that anyone may have noticed uh that they want to include over the uh interim. Uh, and that way, you know, we'll, we'll be that much closer and be able to just kind of knock it out real quick. Does that uh sound okay with everyone?
I think that's perfect.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna wanna. Share. Let's see. Okay, can everyone see? Oh.
Not yet.
How about now?
Yep. You're gonna have to make it much larger, though.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um. Okay. I just crossed out the question marks for George. I don't know if anyone remembers. Someone, someone who was named George at the meeting, but. Um, so this is called order at five o'clock, uh Executive Session says uh, Murphy explains that the board returns open session following the executive session. I changed that to daycare. I assume that was Michael that was speaking about that.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, um. It's a minor little uh. With respect to. Yeah, um, it's a minor little uh, with respect to litigation. Right here, just added that in. I know that, I just kinda added in here that I designated Tom to sit as a full board member. This has been a little sluggish for me, but we're, okay. Landowner education and guidance, just a quick little. Change there. I reworded this a little bit, just to kind of make it uh. Instead, Murphy reviews the applicant's intention to divide the lot in. Into multiple parcels that are not buildable lots. And I said, dividing the lot, creating multiple new parcels that are not buildable lots, to just kinda better convey what. Was happening. Same thing here, the plan does not constitute subdivision, because the original lot in its entirety. Has frontage on Wendell Road, so I changed it, say. Doesn't constitute a subdivision, because the remaining buildable lot has adequate frontage on Wendell Road, right? Is that uh, well, assuming everyone's good. Just put a hyphen here with non buildable lots. Fix a spelling item on Michael's last name, it's nice to fix one of those that I'm not responsible for. Looks like this report annual town meeting should be uh, capital T. Well, I hope you're not trying to read this, because right now, I'm just looking, yeah, and I think, yeah, that was it, so just a few little tweaks I made, mostly in the beginning. And uh, yeah. So uh, if anyone has uh, unless anyone has anything else to have right now, we'll just wrap this up, I'll uh. I'll save uh a copy of this, I'll send it out to everyone, I'll let Mateo know that I'll receive any subsequent updates on this. Um, and then uh, we'll prove it, Ricky ticket next time we meet, and uh, as well as some other uh. Dates. Okay, um. All right, that's all we have for open session, um. Is there anything, any other uh last minute, you know, thoughts or comments that anyone wants to say while we're uh. Still together in open session, I'm gonna stop sharing.
I had one question just about future meetings. So. It's really nice that it's June, and we don't have a lot of stuff, we don't have anything upcoming, but the question is. Usually, like in September, we discuss things we might wanna be looking at for the next, you know, year, uh school year, so to speak. Um, I don't know if we wanna just wait until September, if we don't have a lot going on for July and August, if we wanna have a more relaxed conversation about it, so just. Putting that out there, I'm not attached either way, but it seems like. That's a possibility.
Yeah, well, you know, I I. You know, I I don't see why we, you know, should wait till uh September per se, you know, we can always. Uh, get some things on the agenda, and obviously, you know, this business comes in, some of those things tend to get bumped. Um, right, so I mean, just kind of getting the ball rolling on some things is always good, I know, you know, I mean, we might discuss uh. Possibility of doing something with short term rentals, um, I don't know if. If we'll more watch that, or or kind of get something in the wings on that, there's uh. You know, we could potentially start talking about manufactured homes, which is uh formerly known as. Um. Mobile homes or trailers, right, and, you know, I think. Not to get too much into substance, but it it, it seems to me that there's been. Kind of uh an effort to to rebrand or or kind of retell the story of those, I think that. Um, from a historical perspective, there was. Kind of a a lot of reaction to, you know, the emergence of trailer parks in uh various places, and. And towns started, you know, enacting zoning that prevented that from happening. Um, I think after that, at some point, there was maybe through HUD or something like that, uh, I think there was some. Standards that were kind of put in place that became the, you know, the manufactured home thing, right, so, you know. I've heard kind of two different things with, you know, like whether the value like stays the same or depreciates, or whether there could be any appreciation on a manufactured home, things like that. Uh, so that would be the kind of thing that we wanna, you know, start to look into and discuss with that, as to whether or not there's any uh room for that here, um. But.
Yeah, I got one, just to to float it, not to talk about it in detail, but um, I I hearkened back to you a few months ago, and. Deacon dropped the bombshell that our master plan was never officially approved by town meeting, um, which was, and. You know, we've talked about in the past, but oh, we should add a climate chapter, but now we we can't add a climate chapter, because we don't have a thing. So, we should talk about how we wanna deal with that, we can either. Ask town meeting to retroactively approve it, we could just sort of say it's never been approved, we could change it to be like a recommendation of a master plan. I mean, it's a conversation to be had, but it seems like, now that we know it's not really a master plan, and we keep referencing it, and it's on the website, we should figure out. How to get official some way or another.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good agenda item. That's unfortunate that it just kind of like, all that work was done on it, and then it just. Never, yeah.
Wouldn't think we could pass it.
Right, but 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 why? Was there anything controversial about it at the time?
Open space, open space.
Open space.
It was, it was a huge change in in what we did, it's the, it's the biggest zoning change we've ever had.
There, there was one large property owner that who was really not pleased.
Well, it, and just that there's a, you know, there's a lot of libertarian sentiment within the society, you know, it's just. Everything gets opposed by somebody.
Right. I I oppose that comment, uh Deacon. Um, just for the record. Steve finds everyone to be very agreeable. Okay, yeah, you know, if anyone else has anything, uh, feel free to reach out and let me know. And then with that, I'm gonna just, uh, wait a second, hold on, hold on.
I'm, I'm hosting, you're co-hosting.
No, yeah, you are uh, you are hosting, but I was just gonna mention that uh. Quick reminder that next meeting will do uh an agenda item for election of the chair. Cause it will be July and uh the first meeting of the fiscal year, another quick comment on that. Uh, I tuned in to a meeting of the library trustees, as I sometimes do with uh. You know, I'm usually doing bedtime with my daughter, and sometimes we like to take a peek and see if we see uh. Mommy on the uh, on the Zoom meeting there, right, um, and they did the uh election of chair immediately after the election. Which uh might be proper for an elected body. So uh, I was wondering if uh, if we have any context on that, uh, I thought. I recall that, you know, having seen uh Deacon elected at the beginning of fiscal year, but I could be, that's, that's what we've done, right?
Well, yeah, yeah, I don't, I mean, because the the membership of the board that will be in a, the. The membership of the incoming board is not necessarily the same as the old board, and I think, I think you're. You're, you're supposed to be elected by the new board.
Right, right, so it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be after the election, not after the end of fiscal year.
Well, it's supposed to, it's supposed to occur after the, at, when the term, when the terms of the new board are in effect, I mean.
Right, which is after, which is after.
Keith is not, Keith is a, will be a member, a a regular member in July, he's an associate member now.
No, 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 he's a, he's a full member.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, no, I I thought, you know what, that's, that's, I mean, we can double check this, right, um, we we should independently, we we gotta uh. Trust but verify it, right, because I I the, what I'm getting at, I guess, is. I actually recall thinking the exact same thing you just said, right, we have the election, and then the election goes into fact at the start of fiscal year. But then, you know, I was, I was told by the clerk that, no, 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 it it happens right after the election. Um, and so, that's apparently codified in state law, so we can just kinda take a quick look at that, and. Okay, you know, verify that fact, and then uh, uh based on that, the, you know, we'll have the election of the chair uh. At our next meeting, and whether or not, depending on the outcome of that verification item, we'll uh have it go. Until following the next election, or until the next fiscal years, we we've always done one way or the other, Tom.
Yeah, the clerk did bring it up in the context of the moderator position. Um, and in the context of the election being separated from the town meeting, which isn't typical in our town. Um, and it came as a surprise to a lot of people that the moderator was the new moderator immediately after the election, or like within seven days or something, so I think that is the case. But and during research on it, I found that towns are able to define roles of certain committees and boards in their own way. And since you brought up the master plan, one way that towns can really effectively do this, to have it be their own way. If they prefer just like fiscal year as opposed to election cycle, would be to write a thorough town charter. That would specify all of those things, so, yes, the state law does say the election is the turning point. But there are mechanisms for towns to choose their own schedule.
Okay. Well, thank you, that's uh. Seems I'll be clear as mud, but uh, if we don't have anything specified on a charter, then maybe it will be. More straightforward, but I think that wraps it up, so I just wanted to uh raise that uh real quick, and now I am gonna hand it right over to Michael.
Okey dokey.
Um, say goodbye to everyone.
Thank you, Nathan.
Bye, Nathan.
Bye, Nathan.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Nathan.
Well, I'm gonna in, move to enter to executive session for reason number three. To discuss that strategy with respect to litigation, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the government's litigating position. Litigation specific to complaint received by calls according to its previous bylaw, not to return to open meeting, anyone want to second that?
Right.
Okay, thank you, Jeff, any other discussion before we roll call? Okay, Keith, how do you vote?
Hi.
Steve, how do you vote?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Deacon?
Hi.
Ashley?
Hi.
And I'll uh, appoint Tom as a full member, since we do not have Nathan, so, Tom, how do you vote?
Thanks, I.
An I and an I, um, and everyone's in a private space, I'm assuming, so let me turn off the recording. Cause I don't wanna make that mistake again, uh.